I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Letter of record show that a form of board members is present if this meeting has been duly called and notice that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 5.1. Need a motion to certify the agenda. Motion made by Robert, seconded by Scott, all four. That's seven oh. Let me pray for us at this time. God, we come to you tonight at this meeting of our school board asking you for guidance and asking you to give us wisdom, Lord, in leading our district. And we pray, Lord, that you be with our staff and students as we go through the rest of the year and the summer and the days to come. Thank you, God, for continuing to heal us of this virus and all this pandemic stuff that we've gone through, Lord, just to continue to protect us and watch over our district. Thank you, God, for those that are cleaning the school and doing all the good things for us. We ask these names in Jesus' name. Amen. Let's do our pledges. Honored and Texas blessed. All right, Dr. McCullough, we have some special recognition.
Yes, we do. We have several recognitions going on this year. We're going to start with our Teacher and Staff Members of the Month. I'm going to start with Auxiliary Staff Member of the Month. If I could have Ms. Candy Arzola come down, please. Says, "Ms. Arzola has played a key role in creating a positive campus culture here in Mount Vernon Middle School. Each day she greets student staff members and visitors with a warm and welcoming smile. Her organizational skills are absolutely incredible and how she coordinates our substitute teachers is nothing short of miraculous. She is stellar in her responsibilities and duties. Ms. Arzola works diligently to get the job done with accuracy and excellence. We are truly blessed to have Ms. Arzola here at the middle school." So, our Auxiliary Staff Member of the Month for April is Ms. Candy Arzola. You want to say anything?
Well, thank you all so much. Well, we've been here about two years, but I love working here, so, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to do Elementary Teacher of the Month. If I could have Ms. Devon Bean, please. Says, "Ms. Bean is an invaluable asset to Mount Vernon Elementary School. She is always willing to help out in any way and goes above and beyond for her team and students. She is creative and motivates your students to set and attain individual growth goals. Ms. Bean masterfully analyzes data and has been instrumental in her team's improvement of the use of data to drive instruction. She is always willing to share her knowledge of small group instruction with other teachers and has provided professional development for staff. We are very blessed to have Ms. Bean as part of the Mount Vernon Elementary family." So, Teacher of the Month of Mount Vernon Elementary, Ms. Devon Bean. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything you want to say?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here at Mount Vernon ISD.
All right, next is Middle School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Leslie Butler. Says, "Here at Mount Vernon Middle School, Ms. Butler is highly valued as a teacher and English Department Chair. She maintains high-quality instruction daily and she refuses to allow any of her students to slide backwards. In addition, Ms. Butler often provides excellent ideas and feedback to help improve our campus. Recently, she has taken the lead in creating an innovative plan during AFT so our students can get the extratutorial help in preparation for the upcoming STAR test. She is relentless in her pursuit of growing her students. We are blessed to have her as part of the Mount Vernon Middle School family. Thank you for your sacrifice each and every day to love and grow your students." So, Mount Vernon Middle School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Leslie Butler. There you go. Want to say anything?
It's great to be a Tiger.
I like it.
Mount Vernon High School this month, Mr. Ryan Zeller. With his own cheering section. Says, "Mr. Zeller has proven to be a tremendous addition to the team here at Mount Vernon High School. In his first year teaching high school, he has proven to have a real talent for relating with kids. Mr. Zeller makes being prepared a priority on a daily basis and works hard to deliver high-quality instruction to his students. He has developed consistent classroom procedures and routines, and students know exactly what to expect from his classes on a daily basis. With fidelity, Mr. Zeller has incorporated into his teaching all of the key curriculum initiatives that Mount Vernon High School has implemented over the last couple of years. Mr. Zeller has consistently sought out advice and collaborated with administration and his teaching peers to better his professional practice. He can always be counted on to fulfill all his professional obligations as a teacher in a timely and efficient manner. Outside the classroom, Mr. Zeller has been willing to help in whatever way he can, from working football games, coaching cheer, and volunteering to help with prom. Mr. Zeller is always looking to help our school. Mr. Zeller is very worthy to be named Teacher of the Month and we look forward to seeing the great things that he is going to do with our students in the coming years." So, High School Teacher of the Month, Mr. Ryan Zeller. Anything you want to say?
I couldn't think of a good place to start my teaching career.
Glad you're here. Now, all four of you come back up and we'll get one group picture if we can, please. Here, brother. Now, I'll stand out here.
Ooh. Almost got you. Get you out.
Congratulations, all of y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President, I think next is we are going to honor some powerlifting students, so I'm going to ask Coach Gamble if you will kind of come and introduce your lifters and tell us a little bit about their accomplishments, please.
Okay. My name's Coach Gamble, for anybody that doesn't know who I am. We had two lifters this year that went to the state meet and were able to place. We had a third-place finish with Quentin and we had a first-place finish with Amber. We were really excited about that. We didn't know for sure if we were going to get to go to the state meet, because last year, both of these lifters qualified to go to state, but the meet got canceled. So, we were really excited that we were able to get back and do as well as we did this year. I've got Quentin Johnson, who is a senior, who I almost didn't get to powerlift. He was kind of tired when football season was over this year and at first didn't want to lift because he was just wore out. And the first meet, I asked him if he'd go with us and help us out a little bit. And the first meet he went to, he came up about halfway through and said, "Coach, is it too late for me to start lifting?" "No, come on, let's get with it." So, he did a great job. And then we had Amber. Amber is just a sophomore, so I've got her for two more years. So, we're looking for great things. She is also my number-one recruiter right now because she has got a lot of girls that are not either in athletics or not involved in things that are starting to come out and working with us because we've already started getting ready for next year, and she's been doing a great job helping to recruit for next year. So, we're really excited about next year as well. But Quentin, come on up. It's Quentin Johnson. Quentin finished third in his weight class this year at the state meet, and Amber, Bura, finished first.
Coach, she was a...
Okay, the three lifts that we do at the state or at any powerlifting meet, we have squats, and then we do bench press and deadlift. And what they do is they total the... You get three attempts at each lift, and then whatever you do the most on each lift and get a good lift, they total those up, and your total at the end is how you place in different weight classes. And so, that's how it works. It is a long, drawn-out process, though. It does not go quickly like you might think. A lot of times, if you go to a powerlifting meet on a Saturday, and we usually leave out of here about 5:00 in the morning because we have to go to weigh-ins, we get to weigh-ins, get weighed in, then we go eat breakfast before we lift, and then start lifting about, oh, 8:30 to 9:00, and then finish up around 3:00 in the afternoon or so. So, it's a full-day experience that we have that we go through. And they put a tremendous amount of work. Powerlifting and strength is not something that you can start practicing and two weeks later, you're ready to go. It takes time to build the strength and the power. And so, we start practicing and working out as soon as school starts. As a matter of fact, I'm working now with new people for next year. It's kind of an ongoing process. And the football guys, I don't get a hold of them until football season is over with, which is understandable, but they live during football season anyway, so it works out all right. But there is a tremendous amount of work that goes into this. They spend a lot of time and a lot of dedication. And when they work as hard as these guys do, this is the results. Good things come from those that are willing to sacrifice and work hard, and I'm very proud of both of these.
Very good.
Both of them.
All right, one more. One, two, three.
Coach, what were the totals? Amber, what was your total winning?
Amber's total was a thousand and thirty-five, I think it was, this year. That was a new personal best for her this year. And Quentin over here had a seventeen-hundred-pound total. Quentin also set a new state record in the deadlift with a six-thirty-five deadlift. So, he is the current deadlift record holder in the state for his weight category. So, we just had a great year all the way.
Very good.
Thank y'all.
Congratulations. I'd like to say one more thing as well about this group. And Coach Gamble does a great job, spends a lot of time to sit with our students, but even though she's not here, but I do want to acknowledge Coach's wife, Tammy, as well. Tammy steps up, steps in, and helps on a... Every time they go to a meet, she's right there with Coach Gamble and the students, helping out every way that she can, and so I just wanted to acknowledge her as well.
I could not do this without her, without the help that she gives.
Why?
I couldn't make it. Especially whenever, you know, working with on the girl's side and the boy's side, both, and having to run up and down, because at a meet, we've got anywhere from six to sometimes ten or twelve platforms that we're having to run, you know, different people lifting, because they're all going at the same time. And so, it's hectic, but she is... She's what really makes it work. She's my backbone.
Good. Well, congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. How do you represent the Mount Vernon? Okay, next, Mr. President, we have Jason Frazier with Chromebook presentation.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jason Frazier. I run the First National Bank of East Texas office, which most of you know as TAB, okay? So, hopefully, y'all will start figuring out that that's the same place. Nothing's changed. We just finally got our name under one big umbrella. So, instead of having five names for one location, we now have one, so it makes it kind of nice in communication. So, each year, we've been blessed with the opportunity to be able to come in and help young people that are wanting to progress, move on to college, to be able to provide those students with Chromebooks that will... Hopefully, they can finish out their high school careers and carry them on into college if they need that. By the time you get to college, the Chromebook will probably be obsolete, you'll probably have to get something else, okay? But it will at least get you started. You know, I remember when I went to college, our computers, I had a 10 meg, and that was the biggest computer you could get, okay? So, that tells you how old I am, all right? But it is a great privilege for the banks to be able to do that, you know? Be able to help in the ag programs with the projects. This helps us help the kids that are in the academic programs. And so, we've got five that we're going to give through. I think all of you, you five, yes, are wonderful. Okay, so, I'll call your name. Y'all just come up here, all right? I don't know a lot about you, okay? So, forgive me for that. I had names and I knew who you were, okay? And so, we'll bring them down, we'll get all of you here, and I'll present y'all's Chromebook. Last year, I was able to write a letter, put in there. I didn't get the letter wrote, okay? But what I did do is I gave you guys my own personal private card. It has my cell phone number on it, everything, okay? So, my concept to the young people is, look, if you don't have somebody to talk to about finance, if you don't have somebody to talk to about personal problems, okay? You know, I'm no psychologist, but I've been around the world, okay? I've got two kids that are 29 and 27, so I've been through what y'all are going through. But there's a lot of time, young people don't have a place to turn. And so, I'm letting you know, my door is always open at that bank, okay? If you've got a finance question, I'd be glad to help you. If you've got other questions, I'll be glad to offer an opinion or point you in the right direction of stuff that I don't know. But I want you to know there is a place here in this town to where you've got somebody that you can talk to. If you... Most of the schools all have those kind of counselors, but sometimes you want an outside viewpoint, I'd be glad to help you, okay? So, I'm going to call your names out, and as I call your name, you come up here, and then I'll grab the laptops and give to you. Daniel Hamburg. Adrian Robles. Ashley Domann. Gabriela Castanal. And Diego Torres. All right, everybody, let's give these kids a hand, because it's evident that... It's evident that they've shown a lot of effort in the schools, because I asked for the schools' help in trying to depict the students that need this. So, it's evident the schools think a bunch of you, your teachers think a bunch of you, and so, I'm glad to be of assistance. Let me get y'all your laptops, and we'll let them take a picture of you real quick, because Aaron told me to not talk too long, so he knows that. So, they didn't send them to us in a private box this time. They sent them to me in a bulk box, because we bought them in. But there's my card inside there, okay? All right, where's the picture lady here? Y'all slide around, and I'll get on the edge where the ladies can get in.
All right, everybody, let's hit one, two, three, one more. One, two, three.
Congratulations, Jason. Appreciate it. And congratulations to your powerlifting team. Me, Gamble, and that list together for 28 years.
Oh, wow.
So, I know what he used to look like and what I used to look like. He don't look like that anymore, but he really takes a big step into those kids.
He absolutely does.
So, congratulations.
Mr. Frazier, thank you. Thank you for your banking and partnership we have with us in your support.
If I can help y'all in any way, y'all all know where I'm at, so I know most of you pretty well, so you have to pick up the phone. Go ahead.
Thank you for the open invitation to these kids. That's big.
Anytime. And really, that's for any kids. If you have any kids that have issues that need talked about for finances that need help with that, I'm more than willing to at least offer advice. It may not be the best advice, but I will try to lead them in the right direction. Thank y'all very much.
All right, Max, no open comments tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. We're fixing it into our business park, so we've got all Zellers.
Well, you know, T-ball. Thank y'all.
All right. So, let's go to item four, Consider Approval of our Consent Agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda tonight? And I did hit lead on this thing. If y'all... I'll probably get behind on there, but if y'all need to look at that, I'm going to go on to this consent agenda. Any questions on that? I think so. There's no questions on that. Need a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Question.
Motion made by Linda, seconded by Leanne, all four. Move to our action items. First item, Item A, Consider Approval of TIPS Vendor Proposal for Special Needs Bus Without Seat Belts. Dr. McCullough?
So, with this bus here, you know you approved the purchase of a route bus or regular bus, I believe, last month. This month is for a special aid bus, 53-passenger Bluebird with a wheelchair lift and three dedicated wheelchair stations. It's a price been submitted of $97,180 from Rush Truck Centers, and we were able to boot the money around in this way and create the budget to be able to purchase that, out of budgeted money. Any corrections to that? Craig, Pam, Bobby? Any additions?
Is that the price with the seat belts?
Without.
I hear that's the price.
Yes.
Same without seat belts. The front three seats have restraints, so to be the same as what we have now, but the seat belts will not go through the rest of the bus.
Order it pretty quick, I guess, and get it whenever.
Be here August prior to the start of the school year.
Okay. Any further questions? I make a motion that we approve the TIPS proposal of $97,180 from Rush Bus Centers for the purchase of a special needs bus without seat belts as presented. Do I have a second? Josh, all four. That is seven oh on that one. Thank you. Next to Item B, Consider Approval of Tuition-Based Full-Day Pre-K for MBISD Employees Beginning with the 2020, 2021, 2022 School Year.
Over the last two years, in our district's outspace meeting, it has been suggested or recommended as a possibility of a recruitment and retention tool for our staff, is to allow staff members to have access to our pre-k. So, those who do not qualify in the pre-k qualification, what we're proposing is for them to have a tuition-based access to our pre-k. That tuition amount, what we're proposing would be $200 per month, payroll deducted over the full 12 months to cover that. And for those who... If this is approved, those who utilize that will have a form of fill sign for the payroll deduction at the beginning of the school year.
I didn't have any idea about how many kids that...
Can I do a survey? Do we have three or four?
Three currently.
Three currently?
Mm-hmm. That would be for next school year.
So, again, that's not...
But we have some that will be coming through as well.
Any questions on that? Do I have a motion that we approve the tuition-based full-day pre-k to MBISD employees beginning with the 2021, 2022 School Year as presented? Motion made by Brooke, seconded by Leanne, all four. That's seven oh. Moving along to Item C, Consider Approval of Franklin County Inter-Local Cooperation Agreement for Tax Collection.
This is just a continuation of what we already have, the agreement. Ms. Harper sent this to us. No changes to the agreement, it's just a renewed term for them to be our tax collector.
Any questions on that? I need a motion we approve the inter-local cooperation tax collection agreement as presented. Motion made by Robert. Seconded by Josh, all four. That's seven oh. Our information items, first item, House Bill 3 Goals Update.
Okay, as a follow-up to our Team of Eight NISO Board Training that we had a couple weeks ago, I've asked our principals to give an update in regard to the House Bill 3 Goals that we approved earlier in the school year, and then just kind of give a plan of action of where they are from now moving forward as well. So, Ms. Rhonda, if you don't mind starting?
I don't mind at all. No, I was kind of fearful to try to do the technology thing since I've never connected here, so I printed y'all some stuff out. Do you mind if I take one of those? I don't use it. So, on the elementary, we had several goals, and so that was the other reason I really didn't know about projecting. It's really hard to kind of keep track when there's so many numbers on a piece of paper. So, what I've tried to do for you is you will see on this first page, there is a really dark box around something. That's where we are. So, I thought that might help guide your thinking if I put a dark box around it. So, these are the goals that we had to start with. The very first goal was that the percent of third-grade students that would score MEATs on grade level or above on the STAR reading would increase from 25% to 52 by June 2024. We only have at this point our benchmark data, so we've taken our practice test. That's really all I have to compare right now. And I did denote if it was lower than the goal. It's in red. If it's at or higher, I put it in green to try to keep consistent with that information. So, as you can see, our goal by the end of the year is 40%, and on our benchmark, we were at 34. So, if you'll move on down, then it breaks it out into stuff tops, and you can see those numbers there as far as how it broke down on the actual test. To be able to fit it, I felt like this might be the easiest way for you to look at that. The next goal was the percent of kindergarten students that would score Tier 1 on the ISIP Early Reading will increase from 53% to 75%, and as you will see, we're at 86. We are at 86. So, we have been... Some of the instructional changes that we are putting in place right now, I attribute that to that. So, we don't have students, remember too, now our kindergartners don't have COVID gaps. So, we're taking students in that didn't have a gap from last year, and we're putting in place some instructional practices that we feel like are more aligned to what they need to be, and we are seeing success. Then the next goal starts at the bottom there, and it says the percent of kindergarten students that score Level D on the BAS will increase from 57% to 80%. And the BAS is the Benchmark Assessment System. It's what we use to determine reading levels. It's just an acronym. Okay, if you'll look, as of right now, we're at 73% of our students are reading on level in kindergarten, 70% as opposed to the goal of 63. So, again, we feel like we're doing some pretty good things there. Next goal, the percent of first-grade students that would score Tier 1 on the ISIP Early Reading will increase from 58% to 78% by June 24. Our goal by the end of this year is 63% would. We're at 44. Not to make excuses, but the basis of core reading instruction happens in kindergarten first. And this is a group of students who the COVID is impacting them. They miss the bulk of learning to read, that really core, basic things, those things that are happening in spring in kindergarten. These students missed it. Not to make any excuse, but it is part of what we're dealing with and trying to close those gaps and make gains. We're working on it. Next goal has to do with the BAS, students being on a Level J by the end of the year. We want that to be obviously from, yes, it does say 16% to 80% by 2024. Right now, we are currently have 43% of our students reading on grade level. We have some work to do. Second grade, looking at our ISIP Tier 1, and I have some more data that you'll see here in a moment. I tried to keep this data real clean with what the goal was. Second-grade students on Tier 1, the goal is 58% by the end of the year, and we're at 36% with an overall goal, obviously, of 75 by 2024. Again, we have some work to do. And the last page of that one, Seth. Next page, the second-grade students that are reading on grade level, Level M, we're at 35% right now. We want 80% of our students by 2024. Our goal by the end of this year is 60, but again, we're at 35 right now. And the next page, moving to math. The percent of third-grade students that would score MEAT on the STAR Math by 2024, we want to increase that from 45% to 65%. On our benchmark, only 26% of our students scored at MEATs. So, then the breakdown is underneath that. Obviously, our goal is a little... So, um, then the breakdown is underneath that. Obviously, our goal is a little higher than that. On the next page, the early childhood math professional measure one, the percent of kindergarten students that still, that score tier one on the ISIP math. Um, our goal for the end of this year is eighty-two and we are exactly at eighty-two percent right now. We want to increase that. Obviously, we're not going to stop, but, um, that is encouraging. If you look at tier one for first grade students, um, our goal by the end of the year is eighty and we're at eighty-two percent as well. So again, um, we're proud of that, but we have still work we want to do. And our second grade students, um, the goal by the end of this year is sixty-seven percent and we're at fifty-six percent as of right now. The next page is the breakdown of the STAR data over time. So if you'll notice, it starts with twenty-seventeen, then twenty-eighteen, then twenty-nineteen. That's the last year that we had STAR assessment. And you'll see right after twenty-nineteen, it shows the increase up or decrease from there. So from eighteen, twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen, that's that breakdown. And then I took our benchmark data and the last three columns show where we are in comparison to our twenty-nineteen data. And if you, um, look, our reading, and I apologize that I did not put third grade reading outside that. It just says reading, the first line. I just saw that. Uh, that's third grade, the very first line. Um, we did show improvement. We're up nine percent in approaches, nine percent in meets and four percent in the masters category from twenty-nineteen. The next line is third grade math. And if you'll look at the very end, and I do want to make one note and I put it underneath the chart, third grade math is the only grade and subject that at benchmark assessment day had not completed teaching all of their teams. That's just a note to you. They had not taught everything that was tested at that point. So we are not at our goal yet. We are down below, uh, where we performed in twenty-nineteen. But again, you were measuring at the STAR and at the benchmark. We're not quite there yet. Then fourth grade reading. You can compare as well. And fourth grade math and fourth grade writing as of the benchmark before that. That's just the benchmark information and I'll go into what we're going to do about that. But before I do, if you'll look at the last piece of data, I wanted you to see this. This is the comparison from beginning of the year to middle of the year. So at the beginning of the year, there's no data for Kinder because kindergarten students don't read at the beginning of the year. And so you can see at the middle of the year where they are. And then, um, first grade, um, I want to, to, you to note that at the beginning of the year, only sixteen percent of our students were reading on grade level. And now we're at forty-three. And in the approaches, uh, you can see it's okay to have minuses over in the did not meet. We want them to not be there. We want them to move over to the left. Uh, but there is some growth there. So I did want to show you some growth that is this year as opposed to comparing years ago to this year. And, uh, you can see each grade level there. So we are making some gains in our reading levels. That's kind of step one. You need to move, you need kids to be able to read before you can assess them in STAR and get some good data there. It's just kind of the progression of how it works. Uh, but we are making some strides in the right direction, uh, in regard to that. As far as our plans for what we're going to do between, oh, sorry, between benchmark and STAR. Each of my grades and subject areas met together. And I do have this, but if you want a copy, I'll be happy to send it to you. I didn't really think you probably did, but, uh, I'll be happy to email it to you. But we, we did each grade and subject met. We looked at our data. We looked at what did students consistently do well? What did they not do well? Is it something we need to address whole, uh, class or whatever? Is it something we need to address by student? Wrote those things down, looked at our instructional block of time. What are we going, what students are we going to address their needs in each block of time? And this is consistent over reading and math. It's a little different in math because I, if my students need help in fractions, I can just work on fractions for a little while. But in reading, it's all about a passage. It's about a passage and there might be one question in that whole passage that covers that one teak. So it's not exactly lined out the same. My math teachers were able to line out by teak what day they're going to address, what teak and what area. Um, reading is a little different. When you look at that, uh, this one, this math one just happens to be color-coded of when they're going to address it. The other group did it in lines. But reading looks a little bit different. Their plan is going to look more like, what are we going to be focusing on with whom? We do have after-school tutoring that started today. Um, most of my grades and subject areas are doing, um, after-school tutoring. Again, our interventionists were involved in this, so it was a team effort, uh, between the teachers. And I gave them some, some real autonomy here to let them work together. What is it your students, you feel like you need to work on with your students? Some of them, um, combined students, so maybe some of your class and some of my class and you're going to work with them. Some of them said, no, I just want to keep my students and work with them. Uh, so I did allow them that professional judgment to determine that. Um, but again, I can provide this for you if you would like. Sure you have any questions or that answered what you were wanting it to answer? I dropped them somewhere. I'll get it later. Do you all have any questions? Anything at all? It's encouraging looking at the students that are younger and what we're doing with them, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Somebody step on that foot, I'm off. I don't need it. I just want you to step on the ball.
I'm kind of, this is going to be, your PowerPoint going to be the same thing we have on the.
It's the same exact thing, isn't it?
Okay. Don't need to, if it's coming in the way I close now, I'll just.
That's fine. What you see in front of you is what's going to show on the screen. So five through eight STAR testing, uh, we have literally a dozen tests, uh, that's covered at, at our campus. So, you know, we, we have the bulk of the, the STAR test here. And so fifth grade, we have three, sixth grade, they have two, seventh grade, three, and then eighth grade, they are absolutely loaded up with STAR tests. So eighth grade, they, they are actually, uh, they had the most that they will ever take in their school career. So I know the eighth graders are excited about that. Let me pick the actual place from that. Should we not go to the top? Okay. That's the auditorium. There we go. We need to show it. As soon as I punch it, could it? All right. So, starting off with fifth grade, uh, I do want to shout out to our fifth grade team. Uh, they are starting today, uh, with after-school tutorials. The fifth grade group, Ms. Barnes, Mr. Baxter, Ms. Tarrant, uh, they have really led the way with their, um, you know, with their game plan for after-school tutorials. Um, yeah, but we'll get to that at the very end with, uh, you know, moving forward. So with our raw, our, our raw data here, and I do want to point that out, that's what we have is raw data. We, we don't have anything that's, you know, we're not comparing to a state average, uh, for our interim, our twenty-twenty-one interim. So it's, it's very difficult to see, you know, exactly where, you know, where we are. It's kind of like if you're in college and you take a test and you score fifty-six, fifty-six, fifty-seven and you're thinking, man, I, I failed that test, but you actually might have the highest score in the class, you know, and it hurt that score. So here, we actually don't have interim side, on the far, far right-hand side. We don't have any, any state average, uh, data to compare it to. So just please keep that in mind. But the two thousand nineteen is on the left. I wanted to compare apples to apples. Um, we did have the diagnostic testing at the very beginning of the year, but that was actually testing last year STAR test. So for example, an eighth grader this year wouldn't have taken the, the eighth grade math test. They would have taken a seventh grade math test. So I didn't want to, you know, compare an eighth grade interim STAR test with a diagnostic test, which was a seventh grade math test. I just didn't feel like that was right. So so the first group on the left-hand side, you have the two thousand nineteen, and, and the arrows there, those three columns, that's going to be from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. So that's what you would normally see. You see a little bit of, you know, a little bit up, a little bit of down. I mean, you always want it to increase, but you do have a lot of variables. For example, you have a different group of kids that are coming through, but over time, if you look at it, you know, over time, it should be, you know, going upwards. But then on the right-hand hand side, you have your interim test and, and on the far right, you had your two thousand nineteen to the interim test. And as, as you can see there, it's not pretty. Um, fifth grade all the way to eighth grade, we saw pretty much a, a drop in, in every area. I can't say sixth grade reading after looking at that. Um, in two thousand nineteen, we had different, different faculty than we have now. We also had writing and reading, uh, we, we have split. And they're really supposed to be taught together in tandem. So after speaking with, um, some, some folks who know a lot more than I do about reading and writing, um, and talking with Chandra, Region Eight, you know, other best practice research, we, we combine our, our, our reading and writing, uh, into one block. And so that's going to serve our students better, uh, moving forward. So I'm really happy about that. So it is possible, as you can see in the sixth grade reading, uh, row, uh, to get an agreement there. And, and some of this, for example, uh, I'm not going to give it that specific example, but I do have teachers that I've personally witnessed, uh, in, in, what they do in their classrooms and they are just phenomenal. I mean, they're, they're in their lane. They're teaching their teaks. They're teaching best practice, fundamental five, higher rooms, integrating technology. They have a great rapport with the kids in their classroom, great culture. They're doing everything that we ask of them and, and then their scores just aren't where they, you know, want them to be. And also, um, should have said this at the very beginning, but our goal is ninety-sixty-thirty. So just to kind of give you an idea. For example, I know our sixth grade math scores are exactly where we want, uh, everyone to be. Okay, for, two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen, sixth grade math, ninety-four percent, sixty-five percent, twenty-nine percent. That just makes me so happy when I see that. Any administrator, when they look at data, they want to see ninety-sixty-thirty. That's the ultimate, you know, ultimate goal when, when we're looking at data, just to kind of give you a, a point of reference. So again, keep in mind, we don't have state averages. I, I ask Chandra all the time. She's tired of me asking her, like, are we ever going to have state averages? No. Okay. Are we going to have it for the STAR test? Hope so. Okay. I mean, it's just one of those things. So right now, we're, we're sitting where we are. It's a little bit frustrating seeing this. But I, when I do my walkthroughs and I'm watching the teachers, you know, do what they do, I know that they're doing everything that they can possibly do in that classroom. And I know during that flex time, and we're getting better with utilizing that flex time, you know, utilizing that time the way it should be utilized, because it's tricky. There's a lot of moving parts there. But we're getting better and better, uh, with our AFT, with all the moving parts, um, and also with actual tutorials, which we'll talk about in a moment. Also, we're one month away. Uh, the interim, a couple of weeks ago, was actually one month away from the actual STAR. So when, when you look at the two thousand nineteen, that's an additional, additional couple of weeks with maybe a unit that, uh, with, you know, you know, that they can actually cover a, a last unit that, that they didn't quite cover whenever they took a benchmark. And they also had, you know, tutorials and, you know, a robust system in place to, to get them within it. So it's apples to apples, not quite. But, um, it, 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 it shows you that, you know, there's still a lot of work to do. So on the last page, the final page. And this is in our, in, in my campus approval, uh, plan goals. My first goal was to increase our STAR scores ten percent and we're, we're not there. And we, we went down according to our interim. But for our plan moving forward, we have our blitz, we have our AFT, and we have our after-school, um, programs. Blitz is going to be in class. That's what we call basically a two-week out. You know, you really start turning your classroom into, it's going to look a little different. You're not diving into units. You're not looking at a specific subject. I mean, you're looking at, and it's all data-driven. It's all data-driven. So you look at your test, you look at your, your results, you see where your weaknesses are, and you can group your students, but in, in a blitz, it's all students. So you're looking at where can I get the biggest bang for my buck and, and can I really concentrate that and put it into those eight to ten days prior to that STAR test? That's what your blitz is. So it's interactive, it's engaging, the kids moving around. I mean, it's everyday interactive engaging, which that should be, you know, your regular instruction, but you're not doing any kind of lecture with frigging small group personal talk. I mean, you're up, you're moving around, you're getting the kids, you know, excited about that STAR test coming up. Cause you really got to, you know, you really got to wrap things up. And to have a comprehensive in-class review, to be comprehensive, right, all encompassing, all the teaks, you really got to get the kids up and moving around, get your blood going. Um, your AFT, data-driven, they all are concentrating instruction. They really all are. And their rotations are created by the teachers. Uh, I want to give a shout out to Ms. Shane, Ms. Butler, she was just here, Teacher of the Month. They really stepped up, uh, and our department chairs also, uh, Ms. Hollandquist, uh, Ms. McPoy. You know, even Coach Bates, one of our PLC leads, and, and they're actually working on AFT rotations. Um, I know eighth grade, they're finished. They started today with their eighth grade, uh, with their AFT rotations. I know fifth grade started about a week ago. Uh, Ms. Barnes headed that up and they have an AFT rotation as well. It's very complicated. It was almost too complicated. When they, when they brought it to me, I just said, hey, I trust you. If you need my help, let me know. Cause I mean, it was, they had kids going to this teacher, you know, two days a week because, you know, math and reading is really where, you know, our accountability is. And then let's say they need help in science, but they're going there once a week, you know, or maybe twice depending on if they need help also in, in math or reading. So they have a really, um, you know, complicated, but yet purposeful, uh, AFT game plan. And I'm really proud that, uh, you know, like Ms. Orin said, we were given the, the autonomy to create that game plan. And AFT, by the way, is a between third and fourth period. It's a thirty-three minute, um, it's not free time. It's, it's a flexible time with purpose. And, uh, we're, we're turning that into, it was RTI and GT and, and study hall and all level tutorials. That's now being turned into STAR remote time. Where we're using it for that intense, um, small group or one-on-one or both, um, instruction. And then we have, of course, after-school. And like I said, today, uh, fifth grade started, um, after-school tutorials. I'm very proud of them. So, um, that's something that we are constantly working with our teachers to get them excited about and to, to help them see the potential and the impact that after-school tutorials can really have on the students. And, um, you know, fifth grade's really, you know, being a trailblazer for that. So, so blitz, AFT, after-school, again, it's all data-driven. You know, a lot of numbers on the screen, a lot of things going on, but I know our teachers are, they care about our kids and they know that, you know, every minute is important. And, uh, it's been a little bit of a frustrating year, a lot of things going on, but, you know, we're just going to put all the pieces back together and continue to push forward, you know, no matter what. So hopefully we can get our scores. Hopefully the interim test is, is right or maybe wrong in our favor. But, um, whatever the case may be, when we get our scores and we get our state averages, uh, we can really see where we're at and then we can plan for summer school. So I, I don't want to say what our summer school plan is, uh, until really we, we get our results to see where we're at. So. But that state averag, the, the state averages, that, that's, that's where it really, everything really comes to light, because you see where you are in comparison to everyone else. I mean, I've heard it, we've been in a bubble. I mean, we opened back up February, so I know we've, we've done a great, great service to our kids being to face the place that they need that. So I, I'm guessing we're ahead of a lot of, a lot of districts in the state of Texas, just because we've been facing the face for so long. So I hope that's the case. All right, I'm done. Any questions? There's always room for improvement.
Thank you.
Me included.
So I'm going to put mine on the screen because I had to print in black and white because when I went to print this out in color, I realized that our office color printer is, needs to be replaced. So what you have is a black and white copy. I'll put it up on the screen and if you want an actual color copy, I can certainly send it to you. It's not a very extensive PowerPoint, but I hope that it drives some points home. So the House Bill three goals that you guys approved just a couple of months ago, I guess it was in February, most of those center around college and career readiness and our accountability system and those sorts of things. But before I jump into that, I do want to update our STAR interim assessment data, just like James and Ms. Rhonda did, so you can kind of see how that parallels. So if you look up there, um, what you're looking at is you've got the two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen STAR scores. And then over there under, under two thousand nineteen, you see the STAR scores from two thousand nineteen as compared to the two thousand twenty-one interim assessment that we did, uh, just a few. as compared to the 2021 interim assessment that we did just a few weeks ago. And as I talked about earlier, and I don't want to restate everything they said, but it looks pretty ugly. Most of the, most of the data shows, you know, I didn't actually total it up, probably about an average of 15% loss in most of those areas. There are a couple that are closer than that. We contribute that to a number of factors. The, I don't even like to say the word anymore, COVID being one of them. But certainly being out of school last year for an extended period of time hurt. And so that's something we're trying to work to overcome. But, you know, as James talked about, our teachers are working really hard to kind of prepare for the STAR. Actually, we've already taken the EOC English 1 and English 2. We did that a couple of weeks ago. So those teachers used the data that you set from this interim assessment that we're talking about to really plan the prior two or three weeks leading into the STAR test. You know, we did a lot of, we call it blitz in class, as James talked about, we call it the same thing. We did some specialized targeted tutorials during AFT leading into that English test. And we're also doing the same thing for the biology and the US history and the math that's coming up here in a few weeks. You know, if you look at that, the way I look at it, your mind immediately goes to algebra there. Those are the numbers that are the most daunting per se. But I'm really, I'm really curious to see what the actual STAR test will reveal on this, as James talked about. Because we have had a lot more time for instruction than a lot of schools around here. And like him, I see what teachers are doing in the classroom and I see how hard most of them are working on a daily basis. And also know how high school kids operate when it comes to a interim assessment as opposed to the real test. So we'll see what happens when we get to the real data back in the end of May. But again, that's where we stand currently. And everybody can look at that and see that we've got work to do. And I feel like we're doing that work, and if we'll continue to work hard, we'll see strides made in the STAR test scenario. All right, jumping on to the actual CCMR goals that you guys approved, I guess in February. So the first goal says the percentage of graduates that meet the criteria for CCMR will increase from 65% to 85% by August of 2024. And just as a reminder, the CCMR point is really just CCR now because we don't take military into consideration at this point. We're trying to get a quote-unquote point for every high school student that graduates. And they can get those points through a variety of ways. They can get it by making a high enough score on the TSI, ELAR, and math sections. They can get it by doing well on the ACT or SAT reading and math, AP exams, college prep courses, dual credit hours, associate's degree, certificates, industry-based certificates, and then special ed students completing their IDP. So there's a number of ways that they can get it. But if you see that data table up there, last year, I graduated seniors, we had 65% that met the CCMR criteria. And as of currently, right now, for this year's graduating class, we have 74% of our graduates of 2021. So that's above where our target was for this school year. I can also say that you see that 67, we have a small class this year, just 91 seniors. So 67 of 91 have met the criteria thus far. I will say that most likely will go up in the next few weeks. You'll see in the data table, I'll put it up there in a second. We have several seniors that still can get their CCMR point this last little bit of school. So I would anticipate that number to go up even past 74%, which of course is next year's mark. So I think we're doing pretty good overall in this measure. But to break it down a little further, just so you can kind of see what we're talking about. On the left there, we have Melbourne High School points earned currently. This is how they earned their point, the graduates for this year. And I will say the numbers don't seem to add up. It's because some kids have multiple points multiple different ways. So you'll see numbers that go above and beyond the number of seniors we have. But anyways, students that have passed both the TSI reading and math, that's 20, there's 20 of them, ACT reading and math, 10, and you can read down the list. I don't need to read it for you. You see at the bottom there, SAT, AP courses and honor ads. Those are just things that we don't really have a program for currently. So you won't find any of those in our numbers. On the right there is the kids that do not have a CCMR point at this point. I'm saying point too many times. So 24 of those kids, and that what you're looking at is how we plan to get them a point in the next few weeks. So we have five more kids that possibly can get their AWS welding certificate. We had, gosh, 24 of those just last week get that certificate, juniors and seniors. We have two girls in cosmetology that are going to most likely get their certification before the year is out. And I actually talked to Ms. Norwood, the cosmetology teacher, a couple of days ago, last week, I guess. And she said that this year, there's only two, but next year, she's in line to have about 20 get the certificate. So she's really done a good job the last couple of years of starting to build that program and get girls that invoice that see that all the way through to completion, which has been a real problem with that program in the past. So that's encouraging to see that we're going to have a lot more actually coming out of cosmetology with a national certification in the coming years. Eight students that still could possibly get an OSHA certification. They're doing that with Ms. Sumroh in career prep, so is that about right? And then we got a couple of kids that are seniors this year, but they only need one more portion of the TSI. Five of them just need math and one just needs English. So we're going to lump those kids into, I think I skipped this a second ago, but starting next week, we're going to actually test all of our juniors on TSI, which is not something we've done in the past. So we're going to lump these few seniors in with that group and see if we can get them completed that way. We'll actually look, we actually have access to some tutorial programs. There's something through an online program called Apex. So we're going to try to work them into that and lead them into that test, and maybe we can get it done that way. You also had progress measures involved in all of this. And this is just ways to track how we're going to attain the main goal, which I've already talked about. And you guys chose percentage of graduates meeting the TSI math increasing from 38% to 50% by August 24. So you can see last year, we were 38, this year 40. Now, our goal this year is 40. Now, if you look down there, you see current percentage of students who have met the TSI criteria in math is only 24%. So that's quite a bit off the target. But what I really want to point out is that is only the ones, that is all students. 24% is all students, and not all students have tested when we're talking about this year senior class. That's what we're trying to rectify by testing all juniors this year. So when we get next year and we put this same sheet up here, we'll be looking at all seniors who have tested next year. So we'll get some real accurate data as to whether we're meeting that target that we're looking for or not. That hasn't been the case in the past. The other progress measure was what percentage were meeting the TSI English. And you see there, currently, we're at 52%. Again, that's all students. But among those that have actually taken the test, 84%. So I'll really be curious to see what those numbers look like when we have 100% of our students tested. You know, we'll find that out very shortly. All right, so this last one is the percentage of graduates that are earning an industry-based certification. And we wanted that to increase from 11% to 24% by August of 24. So currently, 19 out of 91 students with an industry-based certification. And again, most of those are in welding, in OSHA, and we're going to have a few in cosmetology. Ms. Sumroh and Ms. Brown and I sat down a few weeks ago and talked about all of our CTE pathways and how we had to make sure that all of our pathways actually start leading to certifications. So I really think we're starting to trend in that direction. And you can see there, I put up there just possible, based on the numbers I kind of calculated the other day sitting there. I think that we could get up to 34 industry-based certifications this year, which would put us at 37%, which is way above the goals that we actually put down on paper. So if we achieve that, then we might have to reassess those goals as we move into the next few years. So that is your update on the Houseville three goals and STAR test. Any questions on that?
What does TSI stand for? TSI English?
Texas Success Initiative, is that right? All right. Thank you. Critical thank you.
Yeah, we got to go through a three-hour training on this Houseville, LA, so we're still not there. All right, Ron Knight. And Roman Totals?
Roman Totals, and your board book shows 1479 as the 12th. I think actually today, we're actually at 1487, I believe, is what Ms. would have ran this morning. So we're getting confused here toward the end of school, which is good. The next thing was the Employee Appreciation Banquet. Want to keep that in front of you and remind you about that. Ms. Roy's putting a limitation in it. It is that last day for teachers, which is Friday, May 28. We'll do it, plan it for the elementary cafeteria. And luckily, everybody in this room is part of the hostess that I want to help serve. So are you still? I tried. And Ms. Tarrant has ordered us aprons to wear.
To be MB official.
It will be. Take the opportunity just to thank our staff and give you that opportunity to, as they go through the lines, to share with us. Ma'am? 14, I think we're about 1487 right now. So we've grown about, we've grown about 1415 over the last month or two. Do what? Oh, I think we probably get there. We all are. We all already are. Teachers still asking? Okay.
Any further business there?
Not sure.
All right, so at this time, the board book convened the closed committee to discuss personnel matters posted on the agenda in law and justice government code, chapter 551074 at 6:19 PM. The board now convenes back in the open session at 7:11. Any further business, Dr. McCullough?
Yes, sir. I need to make a recommendation for two professional contracts. One for Megan Bevins and one for Ryan Zeller. They just, when we approved contracts last month, they had some such finish up on certification. They've done so. And so we'll make the recommendation for those two, Megan Bevins and Ryan Zeller, for contract renewal for 2022, 2122.
Okay, motion that we renew their contracts? Seconded by, voted by Brooke, seconded by Robert, all four. Let's see, so let the record show that Scott Luismann has stepped out at this time. Any further business, resignation?
Just knowledge of resignations. We have Coach Cooper and Ms. Cooper, Ginger Cooper, Ms. Blair's retiring, Ms. Jocelyn is resigning, Ms. Ostertag, the Featherstens, Coach Featherston, his wife Christina, and then Amber Ring.
Any further business?
That'll be all.
If there are no further business, I'd be glad to remain adjourned at 7:13 PM.
Thank you all very much.
Ms. Cooper?